Good evening.
Good evening.
We're ready to begin our regular board meeting. Good to see everyone this evening. At this time, roll call.
Mr. Alexander. Mrs. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
Mrs. Lasher.
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Present.
And Nathaniel Smith, student board representative from Ellet CLC. Welcome.
Welcome. And at this time, Mr. Nathaniel Smith will lead us in the virtual meeting.
Congratulations to the flag upon the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time Reverend Walker. To you, Mark Williams. One, two, three. One more. At this time, are there any community reflections?
Sure, I'll start. Yeah, okay. I thought you were starting. A couple of different things I did in the last two weeks. I had the opportunity to go to the Ohio School Board Association leadership, one of the leadership trainings, after school board members of the ESC in Ohio. This one in particular was about safety and security in schools. And some of the topics that we discussed that evening were school shootings, bullying, suicide and suicide prevention, effective emergency management plans, early intervention, de-escalation techniques, and different approaches to safety and options and solutions. It was a good two-hour discussion. I thought, one statistic that I thought was very interesting that they brought up was bullying. And they didn't go into a lot of detail on whether it was in school or out of school after management, just bullying in general, but the statistics were 20.8 percent of students reported being bullied. That's huge. And I think part of that is the internet, and so I have to imagine that's not statistics specifically in school, but just in general. Also, I'm going to put two of these together, sort of. I went to Project Learn's Night of Illumination the other evening, and I also had the opportunity to go to the Breakfast Club at the front porch last Wednesday morning. And at both meetings, there were representatives from AMHA there, and I had an opportunity to talk to them because I saw a media report last week about AMHA, and how they just renegotiated their contract for their cellular phones for their employees. And part of that negotiation, getting hotspots for residents of AMHA and Akron, and the media reports said it was specifically for children in school that don't have connectivity at home. And I just thought that was interesting. And I can't remember the number. It was 30 or 60. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't for the whole population, but it just, you know, I thought it was interesting. Hopefully, you know, when we start negotiating our cell phone contracts, maybe other entities around town, there's one idea of getting connectivity into our schools or into our homes, I guess I should say, for our students. That still is a barrier that, you know, we talked about every time we go to NSBA and every time we go to Q, it's a huge barrier. So that was, both of those were good discussions. I actually got to meet the new executive director for AMHA at the Project Learn function. Brian Gages is his name, very, very engaging individual to talk to. And lastly, I just want to shout out to all the Akron Public Schools students who received scholarships at the Judge Harold Stubbs Award Dinner the other night. Honestly, that's the first time I had gone to that function. And I was amazed that all of the scholarships went to Akron Public Schools students. Congratulations to them. Congratulations to the steering committee for... Steering, APN's, yes.
We have one young lady from local CLC, by the name of London Green. She got a full ride scholarship to Kent State, so she pays nothing for a full ride. So I want to make sure we mention that, give her a shout out, congratulate her for getting a full ride scholarship, academic scholarship. That's big.
Made her mom cry.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I'm excited. I'm excited. I'm excited.
All right, next.
I will just go ahead and go. So it's been a busy two weeks. My goodness, it feels like it's May for some reason because it's so busy. Shout out to Keith Lickie for continuing the I Promise tours with the design teams. If you haven't had a chance to go on that, he's been gracious enough to allow me to bring a few folks who have been pestering and pestering, wanting to see I Promise. The tour is wonderful, and it's great they give, to hear all the updates of things that are going on. Got to attend, and I know Mrs. Lasher did for sure, the Mason art show and ice cream social. I did not get any ice cream this year, and I did not win any art. Maybe that's the ticket if I... There were some pieces that you got that I know some other people wanted, so I might check with you. What a wonderful way to support their art teachers, their art programs, to do a parent engagement piece that's unique in the district. I really like that one a lot. It's, you go around and as you walk down the hall, you can put a post-it note on ones that you like. Just write something like, wow, this is really colorful, or love this one, or anything like that. And then when you go into the gym, you can bid on pieces that are for silent auction. So just what a great way to engage the community and get parents in. Attended the Stubbs Awards. I cried as well when that scholarship was given. Appreciate Mrs. Green asking us to come up and shake hands with the scholarship winners. That was very gracious of her, and it was a lovely event, really well done. Big Fish at Firestone was a great show, got to see that. And then, that was Thursday night, and then, I didn't bring it in, darn it, I got to go see Annie at East, and our school board representative from East High School played Daddy Warbucks and did a great job. And it was wonderful. I think it's the third year, maybe more, that they've done a musical at East. And just kudos to them. I offered to give them some help if they want with other things and connecting them to some bits and pieces. But wow, so much fun. Gosh, so many things. Mrs. Lasher and I, we're also on a Girls Academy panel for leadership with Representative Leader Sykes and Council President Margot Somerville, as well as some other lovely representatives in the community, speaking to girls and about being leaders in the community. Fantastic. We'll leave that and we'll not talk about that right now. Tour of Ellet was fantastic, real excited. And last thing, OSBA trustee meeting. I will catch you guys up on a few little bits and pieces on that, but I did want to mention they did recognize Mrs. Imobian at the Ohio School Board Association as well after we did at our meeting. I'll stop. I'm exhausted. I'll just go.
Okay, continuing on, we all toured Ellet just about. I think everyone was, oh, maybe one person. But that was, it was wonderful. I loved the teal and the orange. Oh my gosh, I'd love it. But, I mean, it's just fascinating what's gonna be after everything is completed. It's just gonna be gorgeous. I just want to go over there and hang out a little bit. I really like the pet thing that they're setting up, like the pet daycare type deal, and washing the pets, cleaning them, and things like that. That's, to me, I've never heard of anything like that, so that, I was impressed. It takes a lot to impress me. I was impressed with that. But it's gonna be a lovely facility, and whoever's involved, everyone did a good job on that one so far. So we have yet to see the finished product, though. I attended North High School. They had an annual, some type of program. I just kind of meandered into it. It was great. So very kind of impromptu. They have it every year, I understand. And all the students from all the different cultures and things like that were performing. It was just awesome to see the camaraderie and how they supported one another. It didn't matter where you came from or anything like that. They all applauded each other. They worked together in that regard, and just some of the acts were just phenomenal. And this one young lady, she actually sang a song about Trump, you know, and about how he's hurting certain groups of people, and what are you gonna say to this mother? I think it's a popular song, and she just kind of twisted it towards the present and what was going on and the impact it was having on single parents and different things like that. So it was very original, and then some of the languages, they were singing in their languages, and the beats were like, yay! I mean, it was just, it was a fun time. And I never want to miss that event again, whatever it was called. I'm sorry. Maybe Rachel, you could chime in?
It's called the Culture Fair.
Okay, the Culture Fair. But it was, it was just wonderful just to see all of that, and the costumes, and how they were all adorned in their own apparel from their cultures. And then they had cuisine that represented some of the cultures too afterwards, that you could partake in. So that was lovely. A couple of things, I've forgotten a lot of it so far, but last night, I did, not last night, it was Saturday, so much going on. I attended the Dreamgirls. So that was really an awesome performance. Every time I go to Weathervein, I think about you and your manager there. But it was, it was really an awesome play, and, you know, talking about 60s, late 60s, early 70s, in that era, and some of the things that went on in the music business and industry. So the cast was phenomenal. I mean, there were some ups and downs, some laughs, some sad moments and things like that. But that was a very nice artsy thing that took place on more of an adult register. There is something else I'm forgetting here, but...
We did Read Across America.
Yeah, we did Read Across America, and that was good. We took a picture.
I would say.
I may have taken a picture, but I don't think, well, I didn't post. Did you post? Well, anyway, that's neither here nor there. We're gonna continue on around and let our student board members share now and move it on around that way.
Pretty sure most of you are in Ellet, has a new partnership with the Chicago Valley National Park. They're naming partners with the Global Marketing and Media Academy. On Friday, March 8th, the naming ceremony was held at Happy Days Lodge. Students, parents, and staff were also in attendance. Ellet's jazz band performed at the ceremony in our hospitality and tourism program. Used the Chicago Valley National Park's recipes to make muffins and other foods for the guests that were in attendance. Other students were in a contest to design a patch that represents 25 years of environmental education and 50 years of river restoration at the park. I actually have, yeah, a little badge if you guys want to look at it. The contest was a four-month PBL unit in partnership with the marketing department of the University of Akron and the National Park. The winners were Mackenzie Monday and Alyssa Martin. They were honored at the event. I'm proud to say that 100% of our students at Ellet have already selected their new career pathway. I will be taking part in the business marketing pathway next year. Further news that we have, our Ellet's girls bowling team is going to the state championship, where they've already went over this past weekend. This was the first time that the girls team has done that in the history of Ellet. The student body and the staff at Ellet congratulated them as they were leaving for Columbus by lining the halls and giving them applause and high fives throughout the building as they made their way out. I've been updated that they placed third in states, which we applaud them for their efforts and their ability to make it to that point, as, like you said, is the first time that it's happened. Also, Ellet's parliamentary procedure team in the business finance pathway is going to compete in state BPA, Mrs. Business Professionals of America, that competition for the third year in a row. The team is under the direction, thank you, of the business pathway teacher, Mrs. Tracy Ebner. The team brought home the third place trophy last year, and this year are going to bring home the first place trophy. And that's about it. Thank you, guys.
Good job. Good job.
Righty. I'm saying next to the student form, all right? Never want to go next. But I'll be brief. I pretty much, most of the things you cover.
You have spent a lot of time together.
Yeah, you joked that we spent more time together than with our husbands, and I was like, wait, I don't think that's a joke. No, it's true. But just a couple other things to highlight. The Pachacucha event that happens about every quarter happened on Friday night, and the 2018 Ohio Teacher of the Year was there. He gave this awesome presentation about using art to communicate with students and as part of the education. And then at the end, he tells us that all of his slides are actually drawn by one of his fifth graders, who has struggled with autism throughout her, and found him as like a really big advocate. The whole audience was just, it was really, it was fantastic. And also had a very cool, kind of like female empowering last few weeks with the For Women Forever event that was put on by the Akron Community Foundation and the Girls Academy. The panel was just phenomenal. Mrs. Chapman was there, this world-renowned basketball player, pediatrician, who was also in our community. It was a, like, star lineup. But to see the girls ask questions of the panelists and to see the, like, light bulbs going off, it was just, it was awesome. And it would be fantastic if more of our girls could experience that kind of academy in those grades. And then also just wanted to shout out to the CCAA team. It was a fantastic event, and I think we're lucky enough to have so many of those events. But this event felt very special, and it was so neat to include parents and the patch from all the really talented Ellet students. So thank you for everything that event was. That was really good. And I did win quite a lot from Mason's. I'll have to bring them in next time, a couple paintings and a pendant, though I hope my mother doesn't watch because I think that will be her mother's day present. But yes, fantastically, so thank you all.
All right, we all attended a couple of the same events, the Harold K. Stubbs event, which was always good. And again, thank Renee Green for allowing us to come up, and she's done that every year that I've gone, is invite all of us up as board members. And it was, it was nice this time that all of the students were Akron Public Schools students, so it was only appropriate to have us up there. So I want to thank her again for asking us to come up while those kids were receiving their awards. I also went to East High School to an event this past week that was sponsored by Fully equipped, and a gentleman who is basically in charge is Mark Murphy. And Fully equipped, what they did last year, they, or what they do, they're a nonprofit organization, they go around, they help schools that they think, who can compete in better ways as far as athletics. And of course, we know that last year they put a new weight room in North High School, and they had their event at East High School. And they had students from North High School who were there attending, they had students from East High School, and students from Garfield-Kemmore High School. And all the kids were there, they provided the food for them, so they had dinner. And then they went into the auditorium, and Mayor Horgan was the keynote speaker, and he spoke to the students about Akron. And one of the questions he asked, what I thought was really good, and this was all the conversation came around, and I think we have to think about this as well, which I think we are in a certain way that we're getting these academies that are going, is what can he do to keep the kids here? He said, keep our talent here in Akron. And he asked the students, what can we do to keep you guys here so that you don't take your talents to, like LeBron did, South Beach and come back? But to stay here in Akron, you know, which is nice, because we have a lot of talented young people, and we need to keep them, we need to groom them, and we need to make sure they sharpen up so when it's their turn to get out here in the community, whether it's entrepreneur, whether it's teachers, whether it's superintendent, whether it's mayor, that they can be in these leadership positions to be able to move the city of Akron forward. So I thought that was really nice. And he also gave anybody other kids who participated and asked questions, he gave them McDonald's gift certificates, which is kind of cool to get the kids, and they didn't know they were gonna get that at first, but, you know, of course, after one gets it, everybody's hand goes up, you know? But it was, it was nice. And so they are looking to do some work with ECLC and Garfield-Kemmore, and so I'm looking forward to that because they do, they did a really nice job with North High School. And they want to make sure that our student athletes are able to compete, because it says not fair that a lot of other school districts have equipment, because maybe they have one high school, or they have a lot of alumni that come from just this one high school, that they give them donations and things to have, to have the equipment. But they want to make sure that our kids and the Akron Public Schools are capable to compete too. So I want to thank them for that. It's not always a nice piece to see someone giving back to the students so they can perform at the highest level they can, whether it's academic or in sports. Thank you.
Well, I will be very brief. I think the only thing maybe worse than coming after the student board representative is having laughs in the circle. So I only had a couple of things. Most of them have already been mentioned, other than to say, just kudos to David on another good state of the schools address. A couple of weeks ago, first year in a while, but we're, you know, no major policy shifts, but just, we've got some really good feedback and comments from people who just really enjoyed the speech. So. It's not bad. You guys already grabbed all the...
No, I want to say also, David did a good job, outstanding job, but our partnership, you know, that we have that came out of that, thanks to his leadership, that he, we're having a new partner in helping our kids go out and go field trips, which is big for kids, especially kids when you don't get a chance to go places, and now they get a chance to be exposed to places. So thank you, David.
You know, we were talking about it tonight, I was looking, you know, reading the names again and looking, we were thinking of the museum tour.
Thank you very much. Just to, again, congratulate the superintendent for an excellent state of schools speech and all of our collaboration and continued partnership. So I want to thank him for making the right decision. And with APS, and you see the result other than not feeling well.
Right, that was my voice.
It was your voice, but we appreciate that. Again, I shared at the Women's Endowment and Reading Across America at KCLC. And Saturday was a community group that met at the mustard seed, and it will be a tie-in with the presentation that we're gonna have in a few minutes, because that community group wants to find out ways where our children can collaborate with the public schools as it relates to activities to keep them out of trouble. Our children as well as our youth. And Carla Sibley will be talking about how, Carla Chapman will be talking to us about how that might come about. And then that will tie in with our college and career. So all of these things are sort of coming together in a wonderful way. So we're grateful for that. Just by way of announcement, on the 19th, we will, at Glover, CLC, we will dedicate the Resource Center for Tony Swain. If you remember, Tony Swain was killed protecting his sister, hit-and-run accident several years ago. The library will be named in his honor on the 19th. I know there's some other things that we have going on on the 19th. For those who can be there, we would appreciate it. And then on the 21st is the Northeast Ohio Regional Spring Conference. And at that particular time, Lisa Mansfield and Bruce Alexander will be honored for 10 outstanding years as members of the Akron School Board. So thank them for their contribution in the life of Akron Public Schools. And then we want to thank Savannah James for her continuing blessing the public schools by way of making sure our young ladies, again emphasizing women, have proper attire when they go to the prom. And I think almost all of our high schools were touched by that presentation that they had out in Van. Next, we want to, superintendent. All right, no? No, we got, sorry.
No requests to address the board.
No requests to board. I moved my agenda, so I didn't see that. All right, no requests to address the board. We do have our communications and our recognition, which we talked about just a second ago. Carla Chapman will talk to us about the eight indicators of comprehensive education equity.
Thank you. Wanted to pump it for you again today with this information, just to reemphasize that comprehensive equity should really be the lens through which we examine all district work. And so we want to highlight this again this evening with some new information. Let me see if I have a working mouse. So when we talk about comprehensive education equity, it is really the common thread. I see it as the common thread. I think most of us in the room would agree that runs through all of our focus areas, right? It hits on our core beliefs about the work we do in our district to support our mission, our vision, and what we ultimately want to see as the results for our kids. So I see it as just this common thread that runs through everything that we do, and really hits on what we can say are our core beliefs about our young people and how we serve them in our district across every department. The Ohio Department of Education has reaffirmed its commitment to equity, and they've defined it in their new strategic plan. Each child acquires the knowledge and skills across all four learning domains to be successful. And so you can read that definition for yourself, but it is defined as one of the greatest education challenges that we face right now. And just to reiterate, I'm sure you are intimately aware and knowledgeable about ODE's strategic plan, but just to highlight again those four domains. The first is... Mr. Hatchet?
I'm sorry, I'm expecting foundational knowledge.
Foundational knowledge and skills. Our second is well-rounded content. Our third...
Leadership and reasoning.
And number four...
Social, emotional learning.
And so equity, thank you, props. Trying to hit all aspects of that savvy adult learner model. So equity across all of those four learning domains is important to the Ohio Department of Education and to the Akron Public Schools. And so Mr. Alexander and I heard this definition of equity over and over again at the state conference for the national, or the National Conference of School Board Members. And this was just kind of a guiding principle used. Education equity increases opportunities for classroom participation and resources needed for students to thrive academically. And so when we talk about these eight indicators, we're talking about the culturally responsive teaching, family and community engagement, fiscal equity, student-centered learning, teacher quality, equitable student access, diverse staff of excellent educators, and school climate. And these are considered indicators that can be used to develop the plans and strategies that work within the context of your district. They're not all-inclusive, but they do cover a good piece of what we would say is comprehensive education equity. The four that you see in red, school climate, diverse staff of excellent educators, equitable student access, and teacher quality are what we are working on and focusing on in our district, although... although all are equally important. And you'll see work in our district that addresses each one of them across the room here in every department. But these four here, I would say, are part of a more deep dive plan in our district. Any questions? So some of the things we're doing in our district, working on training principles and teacher leaders and comprehensive equity so that the work moves forward at the building level and doesn't just rest at the district, engaging families through the Family Resource Centers, the partnership with the United West Summit County being a way to engage our family and community. Reverend Walker spoke about the out-of-school time providers of various kinds of programs and athletic events, exactly the kind of thing that could be happening in a family resource center, improving access to resources for families who needed them most, ensuring that we're addressing all of those social determinants to health and well-being for our families so that our students are more prepared to learn in our schools. Developing the middle school social-emotional learning model. You heard from the Instructional Policy Committee last week about the work that Dr. McWilliams-Woods is doing to focus on our portrait of a graduate skills for middle schoolers so that they are equipped and ready to access the College and Career Academies of Akron High School model. I'm flipping through my notes because I don't want to miss anything. The superintendent's announcement about this essential experiences, the enrichment and extended learning opportunities for our kids in partnership with GAR that he has managed to make happen is an equitable student access strategy, leveling the playing field for young people who don't otherwise have the opportunity to experience arts and culture in our community, to learn from what is taking place around us. Supporting teachers and others in positive behavioral intervention supports. More to come on that to address school climate. There's a grant that we're working on right now with the superintendent's approval to shore up that work in our district so our teachers feel supported in working through classroom behaviors and classroom management in our district. Human resources focus on teacher recruitment is an equitable strategy, making sure that our workforce is diverse, highly qualified, and excellent. And then expanding our cultural sensitivity, training content to be sure that we're addressing culturally relevant teaching and learning, understanding trauma, how the brain works, being aware of our own lens and how it enters the room when we're interacting with others, especially our students, and the importance of teaching through relationships. So we've expanded that training beyond bridges out of poverty because we have to address these other things that are important to teaching and learning in the classroom. And then I'm just going to wrap up with thanking you for your leadership. There is a whole body of work, of work around being an inclusive and equitable leader. And we have this poster for each of you. I just didn't bring it today because it was just too much for me to carry around, but we'll make sure that you get it. And then I'll take any questions that you might have.
Not a question yet, but more of a comment that ties into the work you do. And thank you for all of the work that you do and for coming back to this. I mean, the work that you started, that Mr. Alexander started on the equity policy a couple of years ago, and then seeing how even that has morphed into, you know, a lot of the stuff that you're doing is just phenomenal. So thank you. One of the things that I left off today that I probably should have mentioned, and thanks to your presentation at Click, was listening to U.S. Congressman Tim Ryan speak today. And he talked a lot about, he was really talking about the issues that he sees on a national level in various fields or various areas. But one of them that he really kept honing in on was education and primarily K-12 education. But he talked about how schools need to be innovative and need to be, you know, in order to survive and that the system largely is, in many ways, not that it's not working well, but that in many ways it is broken and there are some things that we need to fix and focus on and that school districts and systems need to be innovative if they're going to tackle the challenges that we have today to prepare the kids for tomorrow. So he talked about the need for schools to start being thoughtful about providing social and emotional, social-emotional learning and supports for kids, particularly those that have experienced trauma. And then I think of all the things that we're doing around that area. He talked about providing resources for 51% of U.S. students who live in poverty. And then, of course, we know that that number is much higher in Akron Public Schools. And I think about the work around Family Resource Centers. And then he talked about systemic issues in the criminal justice system and the disproportionate number of incarcerated black males in particular. And then I think about our equity policy and the things that we're doing. I think about the student discipline, or the student safety, or portrait of a graduate, dealing with safety and student discipline and all of that. And so, you know, when you do your presentation here and you talk about equity and how it's touching each of the different departments and that you can see evidence of our being thoughtful in each of those areas, I mean, every single one of the things that he was mentioning around the need for districts to be innovative and our approaches to dealing with some of these issues, I mean, you highlighted here, so many of them we've talked about in, you know, recently, that I just wanted to say again, I mean, kudos. It's not so much of a question, just a, I could see the reflection of all of that in here. And so I thought, you know, if nothing else, I feel like we're doing what we need to do to keep Akron on the right foot, especially in terms of equity and addressing many of these issues. So thank you.
We really are. I mean, kudos to everyone around the room because it is, when you think intentionally about this, it shows up. And you can see it in our work. I mean, the AMHA Hot Spots, that's an equitable strategy, right? Giving girls' voice is an important strategy. So I just think that we want to be sure we're thinking about it, being intentional about it. And Mr. James has said I can be the persistent agitator now. So I have embraced that role, happily so. And I have colleagues who are willing to do the work. So that's important. Thank you.
I have one, any other, but just one thing. That's a kind of a comment, too. I want all of us to think about, when we think about equity, equity is education, okay? So think about equity, you think about education. If you're talking about educating our students, you've got to think about equity. This is nothing new. If you go back in the 60s and 70s, we did a lot of equitable things. But somewhere along the line, we got away from it and we start leaving kids behind. We start making them second nature. And now we're at this point that we're coming back. And so it's really not a really new thing, is equity, but equity is education. So if you think about equity, just think education and the whole aspect, not just the education of the student or what we talk about, as Patrick mentioned, social and emotional learning. We're talking about the teachers, we're talking about the principals, we're talking about superintendent, we're talking about us as board members, talking about all of us. Equity is education. Thank you.
Just, again, thank you so much for the work that you're doing. I know that when we were at CUE in the, in the fall, just mentioning we work from Akron, thanks to Mr. Alexander, of course, but there, we're already getting a reputation, at least at CUE, for being at the forefront of this. And we're not, by any means saying we're there. We're saying we're swimming in this soup and it is everything that we think about. I know that when Morgan and I were at the panel with you and we were there, it's like, how can we bring this to more? I mean, that was, that was one of our very first thoughts, our very first conversations was, this is so great, who else needs to have this to make it more equitable? So I think it is, it used to be, oh, it would be nice to have this other places. And now it's, I think it's right at the forefront of the conversation is, who needs this? Not, it just absolutely has to be part of it, right? It's about the need and how do we make this a more level playing field? So thank you.
That girls' program is a perfect example.
It's wonderful.
Girls need opportunities for sharing their voice.
Right.
And learning how to be leaders and learning how to respect themselves. I mean, these are their words, right? Not ours. So, yeah, it is about giving our young people what they need.
And you do have the fashion, apparently Ms. Chapman wanted to be a fashion designer. I think she's got it going on today. We found this out, we found this out on the panel and it was, wasn't it not amazing to go down that panel and have?
Everybody.
Every single one of us, they asked, is this what you thought you would be doing at this, when you were in middle school? And not one of us.
Not one.
Not one of us said that was it.
Sit down, yes, Ms. Chapman. We have a question.
Yes, Mr. Smith. Of course, being part of the education system as it's continued to climb, first of all, I do appreciate your efforts to make it better. And I've seen you guys all put in an effort to make it better, which I see, I think a lot of students take for granted and don't appreciate. One question I do have is with teacher quality, emotional and, was it emotional and social? Has that played a big part in, like, the criteria for teachers here at Akron is them being more emotionally involved with students or like being more aware of what goes on in students' lives? Do you think that would make it a lot easier for us as students?
Well, that's a great question, Mr. Smith. Thank you. I can say that I believe that our work in training and having dialogue with teachers is all about that self-awareness component and assisting them in understanding the different levels of culture, how different students show up in the room, how to build learning partnerships with students from different backgrounds, helping kids access their brain power because they may not receive information in the same way. I think all of those things are part of our discussion.
So what kind of, just to piggyback on that, what kind of cultural diversity, inclusion, training, trauma-informed care, social-emotional learning types of training, do teachers regularly get that as part of our HR and?
So our superintendent has said that all 100% of new hires now receive six hours of that training. And Karen G. Jakes' office coordinates that for 100% of our new hires. And we do that work sometime between June and September and also March. We're going to be doing some of that this Saturday with some very, very new hires. Additionally, schools request our training based on content that we've researched and built out, probably about 200 hours worth of content at this point, that covers teaching through relationships, the levels of culture, understanding poverty, understanding trauma, how to build effective family and community engagement strategies in your school. So I know that Ruth Solomon, I believe, shares our training calendar opportunities with you. I would love for you to come and just sit in and see and be a part of the dialogue. We don't call it training because we're really facilitating conversation with our teachers to get to that self-awareness component.
I just want to chime in and say, we say children need exposure to different things culturally and environmentally, but so does teachers. They need exposure to kids that who come from somewhere different from where they came from. So, you know, you can, you can give me words and everything like that, but if I, if I'm not exposed to the experience, those words I'm still going to process from my own lenses. But if I'm in the environment that, of the students that I'm teaching or I have access to or I have some type of interaction or engagement in those environments, I think I would probably come away with more than just fundamental experiences. I would come away with some well, some grounded, real-life experience that would probably better prepare me for the student body that I am going to be in front of. So that exposure, you know, it should go both ways for a student and a teacher.
Well, and I was going to say, I think it is. I mean, part of the academies and part of pathways and the small learning communities where the students are going to have more opportunity to have those relationships and just build upon that social-emotional connections with, between the teachers and it's not just the teachers, everybody in the building are the students. So that's just, you know, that's one thing that excited me about when I went to Nashville and we got to see the teachers, we sit in, teachers talking about, you know, this student's having this issue. It was all four or five teachers that had a, you know, had that student in classrooms every day. And, you know, even talking about, I remember the one I was in there talking about, well, I had his brother a couple of years ago and he sort of had the same issue. So is this something in the household? How can we address it? So I think the pathways and the small learning communities and the ability to make those relationships is going to be a huge game changer in our schools.
For sure. Yeah, thank you for saying that. The structures are in place.
That's what I wanted to hear. Is it intentional? Is there something intentional being put in place to address that? So thank you.
I have one question, too. And we talk about the, I guess I'm kind of being honest here, mandatory training. Do we have any mandatory training that every teacher may need to go through because it's something they need to deal with in the classroom? Or every single administrator may go through something that they have to deal with because they're an administrator, a school administrator, but not even just a school administrator, an upper administration so we understand it's a trickle-down or a trickle-up effect that everybody is aware of that? So I don't know if we have any mandatory training. I personally think we should, at least some, so that everybody understands because I think sometime when we get one school to do this and one school to do that, so we're kind of missing some pieces. So I don't know where we stand on that or if we do that. But I personally think that we need to have some mandatory training. I think there's some training that everybody needs to know. And I say, in my, my job, there are some trainings that we have to go through every year that's mandatory for every employee, no matter if you're a clerk who's dealing with the people, whether you're a PO who's dealing with it, whether you're an administrator, everybody has to, so everybody knows it. I think it's helpful. So I didn't know if we had any mandatory training that goes through.
New hires.
Everybody.
But I will say this, let's see how I can put this. Schools are requesting the training, right? The facilitation of these dialogues. Most are, right? According to the schedule and opportunities that they have for that on non-instructional days. It is much better received when it is sought, I think. New hire training, you know, fresh out of school or fresh into an urban district, a new professional situation is really important. But when you have schools who are coming together and working through goals around their climate, working through their own goals around teacher-student relationships, understanding their families, it is very powerful. And I think I've had full support of Mary Kelly and Mark Black to require, recommend, however they're doing it, encourage principals to tap into this work. And we see it, you know. I can show you, our training calendar is full.
So this makes me have another question. If all the newer teachers are coming into this training, what about the older teachers that have been here while, are they getting kind of the same training? Are there two different training? Is there a gap between the training? So I guess in my mind, I think of all these things, I'm thinking that the whole, and the whole should be trying to move the... I'm thinking that the whole, and the whole should be trying to move the, move to everybody, but we've got one here, one here, one here. They're not working, kind of not working on the same level. So I guess I just, I look at that in that perspective.
And we track it. So I can tell you exactly what every building that has requested training wanted training for. And so there's that foundation knowledge for new hires. And then a building might request it. And if they haven't had it before, they have to start at that foundation knowledge, right? And if they're bringing us back, and many are, two and three times, then we can take them through the next level. We're building on content, not just pulling stuff for people to choose from. But it is very important that we start with that foundation, build on that every time we go. So to your question, we're not trying to just throw paint splatter on the wall and everybody gets a different version of this training. We're trying to be consistent in the message, in the delivery, and in the sequence of offerings for all of our buildings. But it's a task. It's a big task.
So just along those lines, just to jump in here. Again, we have really caring professionals who work in our schools. So one of the things I know that I believe Morgan and Tim and I all attended in the fall was a session on staff care as well for their trauma and for their work. And one of the things that I know I'm seeing with I Promise that I hope that we can start to push out too is giving that self-care, right? Because you can't give what you don't have to give, right? So if, so finding ways as a board and as administration to support those teachers and those staffs who really, I mean, let's face it, most of our folks are there for all the right reasons. And they are getting burned out too. So taking care of them and taking care of those needs. And like I said, I know that, you know, we kind of wrap the love around them at I Promise. And I know we're learning to do other things. But it's one of the things that we explored, you know, having happy, happy days for the rest of our staff, right? Where something wonderful happens or where good work gets recognized. Because then you can keep pouring in other people. And that's what they want to do. I believe with all my heart that that's what they want.
And I'm not saying that. I'm only trying to think about, I was thinking, no, okay. But I'm just saying.
But we need to take care of them too, I think, as well.
And then as part of Tim and you, we both were in the same session too a couple of years ago where they talked about the staff, you know, the well-being of the staff. And so that is a piece of it as well.
Yeah, their own trauma.
Because they have, we've all probably in this room had some type of trauma somewhere along our lives. And do we still carry it? Yes, we probably do. But we have to learn not to carry it so we don't pass on to someone else. So again, I'm not saying that we're not doing, but we do need to do all, again, that's all inclusive. It's like equity, all inclusive, that's all part of our educational system. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
There was two I was, I was at that time. One was with each building requesting the training. Are each of them requesting it for the same reasons? Or like, is it specific situations that's triggering them to request the training? Like are all of them around the same?
Yeah, so buildings have 90-day plans. And in those plans are climate goals that address the physical, social, affective environment of the school. And so those would be some of the reasons.
And the second thing is the whole diversity thing. I mean, we're all aware that Akron is very, very diverse and starting to become more and more culturally diverse. I think you guys have done a very well job at providing different events with, even with, was it the cultural fair? I think that that was a very good addition to that. And with, one of the events I attended last year was the Black Male Summit for Akron. I think that was a good, I really enjoyed that. And I think that little events like that are very, very helpful to the schools now that they're becoming more diverse and blacks, you guys are acting upon that. So like I said, thank you.
You speak well, I'll get to that. Don't sit down just yet. I think I hold the record. I'm not sure what happens.
We love asking questions. But quickly, it's got to be very difficult to measure what it looks like. So could you talk a little bit about how we measure it in our districts? And also if we, even if we score 100% on our metrics, but the rest of Akron and our community doesn't? We like don't really, we can't exist in an island when our students go home to neighborhoods that don't feel equitable. So also with your community partner hack, could you talk about what that looks like?
We're not there yet. And what part, piece, slice of the pie does this work on? In improving student achievement is difficult. The superintendent has allowed me some opportunities to be trained in how to look at one's own individual cultural perspective. But we're not there yet in determining just, you know, what metrics should be used.
Gotcha.
Because it is just one slice of the pie.
It's a big pie.
Yeah.
It's a big pie.
One bite, right.
But it's important. And we're thinking about that. And hopefully at my next presentation, I'll be able to share more about that.
Okay, sounds like a secret.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that very helpful and enlightening discussion. Question. We'll continue to move on.
Are you a junior?
I was given a, I was given a challenge. I don't know if I'll be able to make that challenge for tonight. Our personal superintendent's recommendation, well, approval of our minute, meeting minutes, I'm sorry, for regular meetings, February 25th. Then properly. Comment? Although, roll call. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
This is Lasher?
Yes.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Now, my superintendent's recommendation.
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 22 personnel recommendations and two items on the superintendent's recommendations. Supplement certifying the graduation list for the years 2017 and 2018. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So Molly, second.
Second, any questions or comments? Roll call. This is Lasher?
Yes.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
And then?
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration two motions and nine resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Second.
Second, any questions or comments? Roll call. This is Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, abstaining from number nine, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
This is Lasher?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration five business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Comment? The move properly seconded. Any questions or comments?
No, not other than to say I guess we ought to talk to Mr. Pendleton first, please. You know, move more and more toward the north name. I just want to give a, give a little shout-out to his office on the efficiency and the cost savings aspect of that. Because in here, we have some furniture purchase items that we all know could have been much more if we wouldn't have been able to make the use of those there. So just great job there.
And also a note on that same item. I asked a question of Mr. Pendleton on this. And if you look at where the money is coming from, that's really interesting too, that it's not all coming from general fund. They're getting a lot from permanent improvement and education service centers. So thank you for that.
Any other?
Just wanted to highlight again, I know we've talked about it, but the item four does go ahead and approve, or approve that Coggo Valley National Park support for ALIC. So just wanted to say thank you again.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Before roll, could we clarify who had the second motion?
Ginger, Mr. Baylor?
Who had the motion?
I made the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all right. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
This is Lasher?
Yes.
This is Mansfield?
Couple of items, Mr. President. I think more than a year ago, you approved the college and career academy pathways. And in all of our programs, I do reserve the right to make apparent changes depending on enrollment. The one that I plan to make at the next board meeting, I just wanted to give you a heads up, is one is the dental program that's currently located at Central Howard or at the STEM High School is eliminating that program and making it a hybrid. The problem is, right now, we have, I believe, four students who will be seniors next year. And we've met with their parents and the instructor and are working through a completion program for them. They don't have a good pipeline. And in most of our, well, all of our pathway programs, we're looking at, what, 75 students to make them viable, and we don't have that here. In addition, we would be moving some older outdated equipment from Central Howard to Kimmore Garfield, which is where we had planned to move it. So I reviewed it with staff. The decision is to drop the program in its current form. But I've also had some conversations with Stark State College where in the four primary healthcare programs in our college and career academies, we could actually start the first half of a dental program with those general courses. And then we're working with Stark State to see if they will establish a dental lab or the other half of the program here in Akron. So our students could participate in that program and finish. The thing I like about that is in they would have more updated equipment if Stark State proceeds, and we're working on that. And I think we could expand our partnerships with, you know, other dental providers. I believe next week you have a request to address the board from the instructor for that program. I'll be asking for a recommendation to make the alteration of that program, but ensuring that the students who are juniors this year will be able to complete that program.
Was the, sorry, is the dental program in its current form, is it dual enrollment currently?
It's, oh, actually, it's on our old-fashioned model, which is like the transportation option. So they typically would have a group of kids in the morning, a group in the afternoon. And as you'll see on our new business, as we implement the MOU with AEA and move to block scheduling in our academies, trans-op is phased out. It really doesn't work.
And they don't get, they don't get college credit now?
They can get college credit. Trans-op is where we have students in our old programs where if you were at Bucktoon Wanted, like Firefighter EMT, it was over at ALIC. The way we're doing our academies, that doesn't work because we don't do trans-op anymore. So all of our students in the academies can actually take college credit plus program.
Stark does their options too. I mean, this is just a first, just hearing it. But if Stark does that, then.
They can do that through college, our students can do it through college credit plus.
Actually strengthen the program.
Right, and I'll be honest with you, it mirrors what we're doing with the firefighter EMT program. Because those, that's a partnership with Stark State as well.
So those students will get what they're getting now from Stark State and they get the certification as well once they graduate so they can still?
Right. Under the, right, under the current program, they were getting that certification solely through EPS. But we're looking at a partnership where they can do the first part of the general requirements app program with us. And then if they want that certification, they can get that half of the program at Stark.
And will they have to pay for that?
No, that's, that's on our time, through college credit plus.
And I think the idea of moving these areas like we are into our partnership areas is like our practical nursing program that we have many, many years here, long history, legacy. But now what our partnership with Stark State that strengthens that, gives them new equipment, a new number of things that increases their student population and allows us to continue because it's still Akron Public Practical Nursing Program at Stark State.
Yeah, I just answered that question. I want to make sure that we're able to still get that certification in dental.
Oh, absolutely. We've committed to helping those students in the post-secondary world, it's called a runout. When you're going to change a program, you provide enough time for those students to run through the rest of their requirements so they can get their certification or graduate.
And then the new kids will come under the new program, which will be at the high school and then the other part will be at the college.
And the other, the other plus of that is if we were to establish just a dental program at Kimmore Garfield, you would have to attend Kimmore Garfield with four healthcare programs around the district. If there are students who are interested, for instance, at Bucktoe East or North, they could also take the first part of that dental program. And then if they're interested in it, they could matriculate through Stark, again, through college credit plus.
Thank you.
The other one is, we have an update on our facility. Talked about, you know, the potential need to do a grade configuration change primarily at Bucktoe because of two housing developments that are going in that cluster. One is as we have vacated Perkins Middle School, there's a plan to establish a housing development there. And then across from Saffirstine Towers, one and two, on Portage Path, Old Farm is the development, there will be housing going there as well. And so just looking at the potential for new students, we've met with teachers that would be impacted of moving sixth grade out of the elementaries in the Bucktoe cluster to Bucktoe because there is room for that. It will also line us up with our college and career academies as we look at what our middle school programs look like and then provide some space in those elementary schools. So tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, I'll be meeting at the three elementaries in Bucktoe, review that with parents.
Is it also, so two questions. One, does that also give us the opportunity to start some career exploration, work with those kids a little sooner?
Yes.
And two, have we, since, since it's probably out a little bit now, have we heard anything from Bucktoe PTA?
I haven't heard anything. I mean, there's PTA meeting tomorrow night, but I was planning on getting in. The three, plus related, so we're free to make sure.
I haven't heard anything from Mrs. Hughes. And she was at the meeting last week, you know, regarding that. I did talk to one person on the, a community member out there a while back about this and that particular person didn't see it and thought it was a good idea. Because the other thing is when we look at, you know, our capacity utilization at Bucktoe, we can use a few more students. And again, it lines up with what we want to do at the middle school level with our college and career academies. It makes it difficult when we have sixth graders at the elementary. And so the other cluster that's like that is East. Unfortunately, I don't have enough room at East to move sixth graders there. But we'll be studying those numbers, you know, as we go through. But Bucktoe, it's a prime candidate for that. And the last thing I want to mention is, you know, speaking of, speaking of equity, and Morgan, I think you brought it up in terms of what's going on in the community. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC with the chamber, the city of Akron and the county to talk about Elevate Akron. We met with Senators Brown and Portman, Congressman Ryan, Congresswoman Fudge and Gonzalez about the work that we're all doing in terms of Elevate Akron, which is, you know, a collaborative economic development model. I happen to be on the Opportunity Akron Subcommittee, which talks about how everyone in our region has an equally share in economic growth in terms of jobs. And so our mission on the Opportunity Akron is, committee is to understand that and understand why, you know, our minority populations have lagged behind others in terms of access to jobs. And a lot of it has to do with, you know, just as we talk about some of the barriers that our kids have, well, for adults, it can be, you know, jobs that are low. that our kids have, well, for adults, it can be, you know, jobs that are located in Twinsburg and Medina that some people in Akron might want to work. It may take 90 minutes on a metro bus to get there, and it's going to take more if it's a snowy day, you know, or whatever. And so those are some of the issues, and we're looking at what some of those barriers are. And also, coincidentally, on the Community Advisory Council with the Federal Reserve Bank, they're looking at some of the same data in the Fed's region to understand, you know, more about the metrics. Some of it has to do with when, you know, a lot of the manufacturing jobs went away in the 70s and early 80s, jobs that replaced them paid less, and training requirements for better paying jobs went up, and some people didn't recover from that. So, you know, the equity conversations are expanding out just from, you know, just schools. It's also at the wider community level as well, which is why our students need to be prepared for those opportunities. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Way of just briefly presenting the report. And I failed to mention, at the OSBA Northeast Regional Spring Conference, I think we have two or three of our academic programs will be honored at that presentation as well. There was another article about start time for high schools and for our students, and it does not seem like it's going to go away. So it may be something that this board or the boards will be thinking about, how can we best help our students, again, following equity, following all the things we've been talking about? Is it better for our high schoolers to start school at 8:45, first, whatever they're starting now, or 9 o'clock? How does that work with athletics? How does that work with other areas? It's working at other places. So not to say that that's something on the superintendent's agenda, but it is something that is...
It is now.
It's circling all around us. So we need to be, to be aware of that. The other item, and Sister Mans and Mrs. Mansfield brought that to my attention, and it was brought to my attention again on the meeting Saturday, is Garfield, Kenmore Fields, that area. And what we're doing, I know you approached the subject, you talked about, you're going to bring us back some information about that. The communities there want to know how, again, can we partner, how can we give them some additional extracurricular activity dealing with those fields, particularly when we bring in the new Garfield, which will not have the athletic fields, if you may speak of that. Yes, sir?
Okay. So last week at our project meeting, the architects designing the building did get a call from the coach at Kenmore Garfield. And so they proposed, and the athletic coaches for football were okay with a 50-yard practice field, not a full field, but half.
On site.
On site. And we can do that, we will reduce the parking, but, you know, at first, I was like, no, we're not doing that. But then after thinking about it, it may give us the opportunity to allow them, because remember, once the building is actually constructed and open, we won't have like a field at Ken because we'll be demolishing Kent. But that's a potential location for, you know, depending on finances and some other things, maybe a fuller athletic complex. We also have the Kenmore Field, which means we have to transport the students there. So I think putting a field at the Kenmore Garfield Building, a 50-yard field, practice field, will be a good temporary measure. And then we figure, and it'll actually save us some money on paving that we won't have to pave because it'll be grass. And then that gives us some time to work out where a permanent field could be located. And so I recommend that they proceed with doing the practice field there. And then after the building's built, we may end up putting parking back, depending on what the field options are. And they're, and they like that option.
So I got a, I'm glad you brought this up because I was going to ask separately. I got a couple of phone calls as well. When we were, when we went through the schematic design, and we did this, the presentation recently...
Right.
That was the proposal that was talked about, was that, you know, there would be no practice field onsite, that they would continue to use the Kenmore Field.
Exactly.
And then eventually, Roswell Kent would go down, and we'd look at putting fields there. But then I had gotten a call that people were hearing that that wasn't going to happen. And I said, well, I haven't heard that. We literally adjusted the meeting.
That's still the point.
Okay. But now, we're looking at the additional opportunity of putting a 50-yard practice field onsite, which would at least, so...
That'll be a temporary solution.
Right. And, but we wouldn't be transporting to Kenmore anymore.
No, we wouldn't have to. Exactly.
So that, who else is using Kenmore site right now? Anyone?
Not tonight, no, it's just football.
Okay. All right, great.
They would still play games at the Kenmore Garfield Field.
Sure, sure.
It would just not be practice. And what, you know, when I spoke to them, one of the things they stressed was that travel time takes away some teaching time. It's not necessarily, you know, there is more to coaching than what happens on the field, and some of that is, you know, pre and post-practice, things that are difficult if you have to be traveling back and forth. Because there is a timeline, and these are also, they're student athletes, so they've got to get home and do homework. So, I mean, it was, it was a good argument, it made sense to me. And so I appreciate the superintendent taking extra look at that because I think it's going to be a good idea for that area.
Thanks for that information, too, because that was coming up on Thursday.
Oh, yeah.
When I get to that meeting, they will bombard me. I already heard it's coming that, about this field. Got approached when I was at the fully equipped, you know, so that was something that they were, I'm going to have an answer, but I think I have an answer now.
Thanks for that.
Okay. I think those were the comments that I wanted to make at that juncture. So at this time, treasures report?
Just a reminder that next Tuesday the 19th is our three educational organizations legislative day hosted by the School Boards Association, the superintendents, and the business officials. Looking down through the agenda, it looks to be a really good agenda. We will hear from Speaker Householder as well as the Office of Budget Management. And you know, this is a pretty big year with our governor, a new budget coming up. Representative Patterson from the Cuff Patterson School Funding Work Group will be there. They have lunch sponsored. Just a reminder that it is in the Sheraton across the street from the Capitol Building. And we have a few of you registered already. So let me know if you plan on going. David and I talked today, and we'd like to give you an executive summary of some legislative happenings. We'll cheat sheet, if you would, walking around and comments. And then I'm going to make some appointments in the afternoon, but I'll coordinate with you to make sure that we had those meetings that you want to have.
I was going to say, so that was going to be my question. So right now, I'm registered, and you still plan on going. Do we have any appointments set up already that are sort of pre-scheduled, that we set up with any of our legislators?
No. But yeah. Do you have any that's specific? Obviously, our Akron representative senators would be at the top of our list.
No, I was just curious if we had any that are already preset, because I think the last time I went, we did not either, but we hit a few doors, and we were able to talk to some.
My goal tomorrow would be to call all the offices, let them know, and if there's a time that they have where the representative or senator would be in, then we would definitely schedule with them. I'd also like for the board to meet Representative Cuff and Patterson. I think that would be fantastic, when we get to meet them. And then if Kim Niernix, who's the director of the Office of Budget Management, would be in, she plays a major role. She spent a lot of time at the Department of Education some years ago, so she's going to play a major role in this budget rollout.
I think if anything else, when we make the calls, make sure they know they're invited and sit and have lunch with us. Sort of kill some of those blocks down, some of our reps.
You know, one, one item would be, if possible, and I'll get the primer information, but Senator Lehner, there's, they're working on a bill to change House Bill 70, which is that school takeover bill. Some are calling for a complete repeal. I think she might be advocating more for a modification. So I'll get some information. Ohio, we're working on that now, and I think the report card is another one that they're looking at. So I'll get that information to Ryan, but I would highly suggest maybe stopping in and seeing Senator Lehner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports, legal contract or policy committee?
We have for our first reading of three readings, we have revised policy 5610, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of students. We have policy, revised policy 5610.03, emergency removal of students. That is the first reading of three.
Thank you. Next, any report coming from Finance and Capital Management? Any report from structural policy and student achievement?
Ours is under new business.
Okay, yours is under new business. We did talk with Morgan Lasher about in the coming weeks, we'll get a report from the marketing side and how that can be effective and the things that we're going to be doing as a board as well. New business, so unfinished business? New business?
Mr. President, the first item is approval of the memorandum of understanding with the JAR Foundation regarding what I announced at the state of the schools, addressed the essential learning experiences. And one thing I wanted to make a clarification, so the $1.2 million, agreeing with JAR is that they are funding basically the cost for the students to get into these venues. We're paying for the transportation. All right? That's the, and what I told Kirsten Tulp and Christine Mares, that's the least we could do for that huge gift that allows our students to have access, you know, to these various community assets. So it's not like, you know, 1.2 million actually comes to us, it's actually going to those entities for our students to, those locations.
So... Second. Any questions or comments? Well, call.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And the next one is memorandum of understanding with the Akron Education Association regarding our college and career academies of Akron, and I'll turn that over to the Instructional Policy Committee to TIAO.
Okay. On behalf of the Instructional Policy Committee, we are pleased to bring to board tonight the memorandum of understanding between the Akron Education Association, AEA, and the superintendent's administrative team. Pat Scheit and her AEA members have been actively involved from the early exploration days down in Nashville for the college and career academies. Ms. Scheit and Dr. McWilliams Woods created a collaborative AEA and administration college and career academy transformation team to drive the implementation of the academies across areas such as scheduling, professional development, experiential learning days, and communications. As the transformation team continued to do their work, Dr. McWilliams Woods and Ms. Scheit identified items that impacted our current collective bargaining agreement. Those items were deferred to an MOU team made up of Ms. Scheit, Michael Householder, Rachel Tecca, Tamiko Hatcher, and Dr. McWilliams Woods, who collaboratively worked out language to propel our college and career academies forward. Today, we would like to thank them for their great work. Thank you, everyone. And now I would like to bring up Mr. Tamiko Hatcher and Michael Householder to give a brief summary of the MOU.
I would be happy to receive a copy of the MOU, and I just wanted to highlight one key area of the MOU. The scheduling model, that first bullet point, talks about the transformation of the current schedule across all high schools, with the exception of your special schools, to transition to an A-day and a B-day. And what that means essentially for both parties impacted is the students and the staff. So the students currently have an opportunity to experience eight transitions every day. So what that means is if you took out lunch, they would have seven scheduling opportunities for classes. With this collective bargaining agreement, it moves the scheduling periods to nine. And what that does is gives the students an opportunity to take eight courses instead of the current seven. And then when you hear about the A-day, B-day, instead of taking all eight on one day, they have a group of courses on an A-day and a group of courses on a B-day. And Mr. Householder will talk to you guys a little bit about...
I'm going to speak to you from the bottom of my heart, right, the formal way that you normally do. I couldn't be more excited and proud of the work we have done together, as you mentioned. Hearing all the voices, the parents, the students, the teachers and administrators all together, and putting together something that will be flexible enough to accommodate every single building that we have, I thought it was an impossible task, but some brilliant minds, teachers, administrators, everybody, came together, put something together that would fit every building. And that was a very hard task, but it really was, it was well done and accomplished. I'm proud of what we are, we're providing for you and for the scheduling. I unwelcome any questions you have about the scheduling itself. Flexibility was mine, and the opportunity for every student to take more courses, it's exciting. That's a reality. Transforming, and that's what we're doing, that's a very exciting time. Any questions or comments? Yes.
With us transitioning into block scheduling, I personally received like a lot of, a lot of students are very upset with the removal of the study halls. I just, I would just like to know like the process behind that, just not knocking anything you guys have did or the work you guys have done already, but just that, they seem to be a little bit overwhelmed now that they won't have that ability to take their time out and have time to do like their work or study and stuff like that. I just want to know, how did that come into play?
Having more opportunities to be exposed to more education, to me, it's a lot more important than this study hall. However, I wouldn't say that, you can't say they will be totally eliminated. That is, that is, you know, not really true. There's a flexibility of there of where the skinnies may be felt where you may have to have a study hall there. So there is an opportunity there for those who really need to have it, you know, to still take it.
For those who don't know, skinnies are the ones that you can cut in half. So that's what, we've had kind of a deeper dive into this than than everyone else, but so skinnies are, instead of being a 90-minute period, there are some that are cut and can be two 45-minute periods. So those will exist, and so that even adds more opportunities for more learning, less conflict.
Not only that, he's mentioning the opportunity of taking seven, eight courses. I was exposed to Firestone Building where the kids took lunch in my class. They would eat lunch. Now, without having a zero period, they may even be able to fit nine courses in there because we do have nine years.
And maybe have a lunch.
And maybe have a lunch.
But that's a good question.
It is a good question.
Because some, some children may not have that quiet at home, so they're like, oh, without my study hall, I'm going to get my work done, so...
It is a good question.
And then you talk about the flexibility, it's across buildings, right? So a Jazz Band at Allen may have 45 minutes every day, while a Jazz Band at North might have an A-B schedule of nine minutes. Is that...
That's a possibility. It's a possibility. Of course, there are different pathways, so they're going to have different needs. Of course, there are different pathways, they're going to have different needs. Every career ed course is going to require, some of them will like to be blocked, double periods, however you want to call them, and some will like to have the skinnies. But, but, I mean, the main, the base is still a block for a career ed course, because that's what's required for some P V L training, for some, some things that the students have to produce.
And no matter if we're talking study halls, or if we're talking some of your advanced ending courses, or something as unique as band, the ultimate goal is to personalize the schedule to be most conducive for the staff and the student.
That was...
And that flexibility is what allows us to do that. So when we talk about a study hall, the goal is to put someone in the study hall who could help you with the work in the event that you need it. So we wouldn't want to call it just free time in the day, if we could need you, a certified licensed teacher, to help support your learning in that room. And if we find that it's the most conducive environment in the day, that flexibility or that level of intentional design is what we're striving for. And we believe that this particular schedule, pending your approval, would allow that to take place.
The preservation of those elective courses and the higher-level courses were definitely in mind during the entire design. So that, you know, you hear some schools where everybody, you know, that mold, everybody has to fit that mold of blocks, and then A B courses disappear. I was the first one that was skeptical about that, and that's why I wanted to be part of that scheduling committee.
And I like what you guys, because I like the block schedules. I've been around the block schedules before and see how it has been productive and effective. But Mr. Smith was asking the question about kids, who's going to be out there making sure the kids know, so they get an understanding? Because he's asking a question of the way the students are looking, and they may need to have some questions asked. So who's going to be out there to answer the questions for, for the students, so they get an understanding and know that it's not going to be the block, but it'll be some other?
So we are going to be really intentional with that communication plan for our students and for our families. We're waiting for final approval from the board, and then we'll set out a clear communication plan. One of the things we did last week was the student board members were in for an all-day kind of professional development session on everything going on in the district, and they gave us some really good ideas on the best way to communicate that we're totally taken advantage of.
Thank you.
There is a subcommittee, a communications subcommittee in the transformations team that is in charge of all types of communication, internal and external. And I'm sure that we're going to take care of that, how to approach, you know, that task.
And we know that this decision impacts four people. We know that it impacts our staff, it impacts our administrative leadership team. Those focus meetings are actually taking place and scheduled. And then we also got to inform the parents as well as the students, because any type of an adjustment in how students study and how your day is going to look is key to all of us. So we've taken into account the information that came from that all-day training session of students, and we're going to create a communication schedule and resort to our team to do that. But thank you both. Great, great question.
Can I just, Professor, can I just, all, everything in the M O U was critical and important, but the scheduling was the toughest part of figuring all this out. These two co-chaired this committee. There were more charts than I've ever seen in my life that came out, the options and what this could look like. So I want to make sure we thank them for their work. Michael Householder is the vice president of A E A. If you don't, everybody knows about that. Tamiko Hatcher, who's on my staff, is the director of specialty programs. So let's thank them.
I have a question real quick, because Ellen just said something. So we've already had a trial run of what each school's blocks are going to look like. So I know there's been in the past a lot of hand wringing by counselors about, you know, trying to get everybody scheduled to the beginning of the year and sort of present a free-for-all to some of the school buildings. So is it thought that this is going to make that life or those things easier?
At the beginning?
Yeah.
Probably not. I'm going to be honest with you. At the beginning, everything that is new is going to require a little bit of adjustment, is going to require a little bit of pain. But later on, I believe it'll be much easier. I believe what we did, system, I mean, it comes with a little bit, Tamiko comes with a lot of knowledge of working on the block, you know, with a previous school. And I'm sure that it was already, you know, systematic by the time you left there, right?
And two years ago, under the leadership of Mark Black, executive director of special programs, he began to look at the whole tallying system and lays in what we can best capture what students' needs are. Karen DeGeeck's team, teaching and learning, also is creating online systems in addition to Howard, to make sure that we're not only communicating the courses in which we offer, but also to take a look at the equity in which we're offering those courses across the district. So we had to look at some of our own internal systems to make sure that the scheduling process can progress and meet our deadlines. I do agree with Michael. There will be some areas, because it's new practice, and it's two things to consider. Because when you talk about personalizing schedules for high school students, you first got to capture what they want, and then put it in a way of putting it in a system that's going to systematically schedule that. So there will be growing pains, learning curves, and, but what I do believe is exactly what Michael said, we're putting students at the center, and we're taking control over the educational experiences that we want them to have. So whether it's experiential learning happening at their early ages, or their high school career pathway beginning as early as ninth grade. So it's a combination of all those things, there's a part that goes into it, but ultimately we believe that this is the first step into achieving the type of graduates that we want.
So we already know what the skinnies are going to be? I never heard that term until today.
What we do is we make sure that that skinny course is not causing any conflicts with the course that meets every other day. So we begin by converting it over, and then we start looking at where their stressors are on the schedule, and then we create those relief files that they may be in the form of that skinny lecture hall.
Well, we also have, you know, we've kind of been test driving North High School for what it's worth, and STEM's already on A B block. So they're looking at us like, what? You know, hey, what's the big deal? Right? Because, especially the STEM High School students, because they've done it for years. So, you know, it's not like it's brand new, brand new, but it's huge, shore it all with everybody else. So thank you so much for all you are.
Can I just state it for just a second?
Did your dad ask the question? It's too long.
All right. We wanted to give you the opportunity, since your son would sit in there to ask the question through him. Because you know we don't take questions from the audience.
Okay.
If nothing else?
A little, another statement. I apologize. But one of the things that I had, as superintendent, at the, at the event at 10 years, after all the questions, just was, how, did he believe that the academy, the addition of the academies and the new programs and everything would increase the graduation rates in Akron? And you guys have provided a lot of insight on that, and the thought process behind introducing the academies to the high schools. And it's definitely becoming a lot more clear to why you guys made this decision, and why you guys believe it'll be beneficial to us. And as one of those things, I'd say, it gives me a different viewpoint of the academies. A lot of, a lot of students don't agree with it, but I don't think they truly understand how beneficial it will be, especially considering where the education system was before, where it's just the standardized courses that you had to take, versus now you have the academies and different pathways for you to experience that will definitely impact how you, how you operate outside of high school. I just think that that was very, very, very incorporated at the right time, too.
Well, thank you for the confidence. Thanks for the collaboration. And again, as Mr. Williams would emphasize, the working relationship with A E A, with our senior staff, with everyone else around the table, to get it done, something that wasn't easy, something that you thought would never happen, it has. And we've done a good job, so we want to continue that collaboration and that working relationship. So thank you very much.
Okay, we need a motion. The move by Mansfield, second by Baylor.
Yes.
Roll call? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
This time, and if there's nothing else, we need to go into executive session pursuant to revised code 121, point 22 G1, for the purpose of considering the dismissal of a public employee or official of the school district. And I need a motion, and G4, and we need also G4, which is to review negotiations or bargain sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment. Need a motion for the two of them. The second, any questions or comments? Roll call?
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.